Well, good morning and welcome to our City Council Consent Meeting and Workshop. We will get things going this morning, calling the meeting to order, and first line of business is approval of the minutes of regular meeting on April 16th, 2019. Any changes or corrections needed? Seeing none, I'd move that we approve those meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Good to have a unanimous vote once in a while. Consent agenda items, one through seventeen. Any items need to be pulled? Seeing none, I would move that we approve consent agenda items, one through seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Board of bids contracts? Somebody want to share with us the money that you want to spend? It's all you, isn't it?
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Hannah Lang, Department of Finance. Today I present to you the formal bid report from April 22nd, Board of Bids. First engineering bid we have is sanitary sewer lagoon rehabilitation to serve Fairway Meadows Edition. We're deferring that to May 6th. Next engineering bid is Brookview Entrance Road to serve Brookfield Edition. Recommended award is Conspec Incorporated for $696,954.25. Next engineering bid is OP-3 Preservative Seal. Recommended award is Pro Seal Incorporated for an aggregate total of $715,767.50. The last engineering bid we have is Oaklawn Neighborhood Water Main Replacement. Recommendation is to defer to May 6th. The first purchasing bid we have is Scissor Style 50K Recess Vehicle Lift. Recommendation is to defer to May 6th. Next purchasing bid we have is install fiber optic cable and equipment. Recommended award is Decker Electric for $55,904. And the last purchasing bid we have is brooms, main, and gutter for street sweeper. Recommended award is key equipment and supply for $75,836.70. That's all the bids, and with that I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions on the bids? Thank you.
Thank you.
I've moved that we award the bids as mentioned.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Councilmember appointments, comments? Are we really going to be that quiet? If you guys don't say anything, I'm going to call Greg Ferris up.
It's a rainy day, Mayor. Sorry.
He left.
Nice security. All right. Well, before we adjourn, we're going to have to have an executive session. We'll have it at the end of the workshop. Does that work for everyone? So we will suspend the council meeting and go into workshop.
Well, keeping with the theme today, Mayor, we'll just be glad to answer any questions that you have.
All right. I have a list.
Actually, we have, the first two items should be grouped together. Chief Snow and Dr. Gallagher are going to make presentations regarding, first of all, the Fire Department Optimization Project that was brought to you back in 2018. It's important that you be updated because of some important changes to that program. And then Dr. Gallagher is going to talk about another concept that we'd like to explore, our pilot, community response teams, and I think that can also have a very beneficial impact on our community in terms of public safety. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Snow.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to give you a success story, and I'm very excited about giving the opportunity to present to you guys this morning. And largely, the success story is, well, it wouldn't have been made possible without our county partners, a lot of collaboration and cooperation. And two of those county partners that played a significant role in our success is Dr. John Gallagher, which, who will be presenting to you as soon as I'm finished with the review and an update. And from the, he's currently serving the Sedwick County as the Medical Director, and also Elora Forshi, who is the Emergency Communications Director. And she's here to answer questions at the end. So with that, I get the opportunity to tell you about our success story. Fire Department, just like every other department, spends a significant amount of time taking a look at data. And in 2015, we realized that we had gotten to the point in which our medical calls were multiplying at a rate in which we forecasted out that our current resources weren't going to be able to sustain. So up in front of you right now is a chart that signifies kind of for the past 10 years, from 2004 to 2015, what our call volume was. The yellow line at the bottom is representative of not medical calls, anything that was not a medical call. The green line represents medical calls, and the blue line then represents all calls. So from 2015 to, or from 2004 to 2015, our rate of increase was a little over 4%. And at this rate, if we would have continued at that rate without doing anything, we would have been in excess of 61,000 calls at the end of 2018. What we did when we recognized that we were getting to a point in which our calls were multiplying at such a fast rate, we elicited the help of Wichita State University's Public Policy Management Center. And they did some research for us, and they looked around the United States at what other fire departments were doing at the time to address it, because, you know, we weren't on an island by ourselves. And from that research evolved what we referred to as optimized deployment. And in 2016, we went around to the District Advisory Board meetings and made presentations in regards to how we thought that we could handle the significant increase in what we call high-frequency, low-acuity calls. And so we did that in 2016. And one of the very last things that we did was we brought all external stakeholders into the room. And the reason why we brought them into the room is because we thought, well, if we're going to implement a program, they probably ought to know what we're doing, since a little bit of each one of that touches them. And so we brought them into the room, and that was probably the best decision we've ever made, as far as efficiency and collaboration and best utilization of resources. And when we did, and we explained to them what was happening, and also what we were planning on implementing, several of the county, our county partners put up their hands and said, hey, we might be a little bit of help here. One of those being the Emergency Communications Director, she said that, you know, we currently do emergency medical, or emergency medical dispatching. She said that we don't implement what's called determinate-based dispatching. So maybe we can do that. And then Dr. Gallagher put up his hand, and he said, yeah, let's implement that, and I will oversee prioritization of each one of those calls. So what that meant was that he would spend some time in a committee, and they would prioritize the different 911 calls and put them into different categories. So when they did that, when we originally designed optimized deployment, we were hoping for a 4% to 8% reduction in calls. So when they put their hands up, again, forecasting things out, we thought, well, we might get about, you know, if they're going to do this with the emergency medical dispatching, that we might have a reduction of about 13,000 calls. When, in reality, when we, when it was actually implemented, we actually decreased about 6,500 calls from 2015, which was a 12% decrease, which is still above what we had projected. Our hopes was the 4% to 8%. So this is just a graph that shows you that when we actually gathered the data between 2015 and 2018, you can take a look that our non-medical calls remain pretty stagnant, pretty even, very consistent. But if you start to take a look at the green line, which is our medical calls, by the implementation of EMD and Dr. Gallagher's oversight, our calls, our medical calls began to decrease, which also made all calls decrease. And the red line just, it just indicates what it would have been if we would have done And October 1st of 2018, so you, that's not much time, you know, but what I'm trying to say is, implementation, we haven't been, it hasn't been implemented for very long. So Dr. Gallagher, on October 1st of 2018, had two years' worth of data, and he thought that that was sufficient at that time for him to make an informed decision. And he did. What he did was he took a look at priority five and priority six calls, which are your high-frequency, low-acuity calls. And by looking at them, the data that, what the data said to him was that on priority five calls, calls that were classified as priority fives, that those are high-frequency, low-acuity, but high-transport. And since the Wichita Fire Department is not a transport agency, he said there's no sense for the Wichita Fire Department to respond to priority five calls. Priority six calls are high-frequency, low-acuity, but no-transport. So he said Wichita Fire can continue to go to priority fives. This was October 1st of 2018. So if you look at the month in this chart, the blue lines indicate our priority five calls. So in September of 2018, we were responding to a little over 350 priority five calls. When he implemented us not responding, his directive in regards to priority fives and priority sixes, on October 1st, noticed that our calls dropped to 19. And then projected, if you take a look at through the months of November, December, January, February, March, we never got up into 20s, everything eight, 19, eight, 12, nine, 15, and six. And if you look at the orange line, the orange line is our priority sixes, it's remained pretty consistent. So if we just take a look at our medical call profile comparison, so if you're looking at the pie chart that is on your left there, if you look at alarm classifications from 2014, the orange, or the gray area indicates our high-frequency, low-acuity calls. So 38% of our time in 2014, we were spending on those types of calls. If you move around the pie chart to the orange area, 26% of our time was spent on non-medical calls. And the gold or yellowish area is the 36% of our time we're spending on more significant types of medical calls. Now, fast forward to 2018, the pie chart that's on your right, after implementation of EMD, only 9% of our time did we spend on high-frequency, low-acuity calls. And if you look at the orange, the orange is our non-medical calls, by not responding to as many high-frequency, low-acuity calls, it allowed us to be in our primary response area to address 42% of the times calls that were in our area, non-medical calls. And also, going around the chart there, 49% of the time, it allowed us to be available for those more significant medical calls. And this slide just basically shows you just what, exactly what I was talking to you about. It talks about that in 2018, we only responded 9% of the time, or about 87,000 calls were low-acuity, and that our low-acuity medical calls then, from 2015 to 2018, dropped 51%. That's significant for us. Remember, we were shooting for the 4% to 8%, so 51% is huge for us. And this is all a direct result from collaboration and cooperation and the implementation of emergency medical dispatching. I'm going to show you a couple maps. These are heat maps I showed back in 2016. They talk about the hotspots, or in other words, where all the medical calls happen to occur. And this one here, notice the prominence of the red that comes out. Majority of calls, again, are just in the core of the city, and we talked about this back in 2016. Where the one is, that was the Station 1, that's where Station 1 was located, and that was our target area for our pilot program at that time. If you look at this next slide, see how the red's not as prevalent? That's because the reduction or the, by implementing the emergency medical dispatch, you can see that we have a significant reduction in, in medical calls. This is just, just real quick, this is Station 1's primary response area, this is where we had initial, initially had identified the area to start the pilot program. And I introduced this back in 2016 also, just to give you some context of what we're talking about. In 2015, we had over 5,000 calls in Station 1's primary response area. Station 1 currently covers about 4.9 square miles, it's in the core of the city, and it only has three units that respond to it, a squad, an engine, and a truck with eight people. And if you want to put that in some context, Hutchison Fire and Emporia Fire combined together, they do exactly, about exactly the same thing. They serve a community of 70,000, which is 35 square miles. They use nine stations to respond to those 5,000 calls, and they have 43 people. So Station 1 was extremely busy. In 2015, then, about 15% of the time, Station 1's three apparatuses were not in the station to respond to 911 calls there in their, in their area. So about 650 of their calls, they were not there. And over 400 of those calls were what we call high-frequency, low-acuity type calls. So between 2015 and, and 2018, and the implementation, like I said, it was important to remember in 2018, we only implemented, Dr. Gallagher only implemented just since October, so he really only looking at the last quarter of that year. He implemented this new prioritization in how units would respond. It allowed us to reduce our calls by 500, which was a 10% reduction from 2015, just in a quarter, basically. And by the end, if we did some projection, by the end of this year, we're projecting to be down 17% calls. And this is just some more additional information. The difference between 2015 and 2018, about 11% of the time now, units are coming, where before it was 15% of the time, units were coming from further away to, into Station 1's primary response area. Before, we had about 400 calls that were low-acuity calls, we're currently now down to about 70. So this is 82% reduction from 2015. The changes that through collaboration and cooperation with our county partners have reduced our medical calls by 22% since 2015 and 2018. Our low-acuity calls have been reduced by 51%. And with the changes in priority fives, we expect to have an additional reduction of over 10,000 calls by the end of 2019. And why is that important? Because now our units will be in quarters when true or when higher medical calls, higher classified medical calls come in, and also allow us to be in-station to address non-medical calls. So with that, the next part of the presentation is, Dr. Gallagher's going to tell you, take you some next steps, and then we'll entertain questions. And Elora's here today to also help if you have any questions directed towards emergency medical.
Chief Snow, there was another part of the optimization that is not addressed by this, and that had to do with equipment deployment. Could you share with the council just a little bit of your thoughts on squads and the first step you're taking on the replacement of squads?
Yeah. One of, one of the things, you know, as, since optimized deployment has been addressed by just simply a process change, I continued to take a look at our resources. And the resources that we currently have is we have squads out there. Well, squads have three functions. There are a, they transport personnel to fires, because the pumps that are on the back of them aren't rated for structure fires. They transport personnel to medical alarms. And the third thing they do, and they're a terrible tool for it, is they address grass and brush fires. And the reason I say they're a terrible tool is because they're not allowed to go off-road. And if you know grass and brush fires, they're usually out in the middle of fields, or you need to get off-road to address them. So trying to be more efficient and more cost-effective and be a better stewards of the taxpayers' money, I have proposed to the city manager, and he's grant, granted a pilot program, where we'll replace those squads with pickup trucks. It's more cost-effective. In the core of the city, the terrain is different than on the outskirts. The proposal, once I have some data, is to replace the squads with pickup trucks and brush trucks, put the brush trucks on the outskirts of the city. They're a better tool, and I can do both of those. I can purchase, right now this Wichita Fire Department has 19, is assigned 19 squads. I can, and then if I do, you know, if I just open up the world here and I purchase 16 pickup trucks and 12 brush trucks, and place them strategically around the outskirts of the city, the brush trucks, and put the pickup trucks in the core of the city, just by just doing that, and that's the maximum, I'm not saying that's exactly what we'll do, because we'll let the data drive it, but that's the worst-case scenario, we'll save taxpayers $182,000. So that's what we're looking at doing. We're going to put three pickup trucks on in the core of the city and gather some data, and then we'll continue to take a look at our deployment models, we'll continue to take a look at the resources that we have, trying to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I may, real quick, I just want to follow up on Chief Snow's presentation. Former Councilmember Meitzner and I worked on this task force for the last couple of years, and we first started this back in 15, and looking at how we're deploying resources in the core. And we wouldn't have been able to achieve these numbers if the group hadn't come together and came up with these ideas, specifically how they're prioritizing calls. That made a huge difference, as you can tell by the numbers. Thanks to 911, Laura Forshi, and Dr. Gallagher, the process sounded simple, but it took a lot of collaboration and breaking down some barriers and some, some realization that we've got to do something different, because it was just taxing the system too much, and our firefighters were responding unnecessarily, in my opinion, to calls that kept them away from their core function. And this allows resources to be in the fire station to respond to those real emergencies. The next piece that you're going to hear is something that came out of that discussion as a way to take it to another level. But again, I just wanted to thank everybody that served on that. It was both city and county partners, law enforcement, Central County Sheriff, again, 911, comp care, everyone really brainstormed. WSU led the discussion, but it was really gratifying to see these numbers and the impact that it had had, so I just wanted to share that.
Perfect. Yeah. Good work, and Chief, thank you for setting the bar for all of the other departments that deploy resources in this city. Well done.
Well, the lead-in to Dr. Gallagher, one of the things that we've realized, our work's not done, that the community out there, there's still, there's still gaps out there. This is only a small piece of it, and this is a Band-Aid, to be very honest with you. I mean, pretty soon, the 911 caller will get wise, and they'll figure out what they need to say to change from a priority five and six to a priority one, two, and three. But on the other side of it, we're trying to stay ahead of it, and Dr. Gallagher's presentation is going to give you some, some ideas of where we want to go forward with our next phase. So, Dr.? So, Dr.?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm John Gallagher, and I have the privilege of serving as the EMS System Medical Director for our community, which also means that I get to live in this space of the ongoing collaboration between all of the partners. It seems that everything we do is a connection between city and county, or police and fire, or medical and public service. So this, this was a potentially exciting project, but as I reflect on what Councilman Frye was saying, I completely agree. I think the people were responding inappropriately or unnecessarily. The problem is, we didn't know which ones, right? So we knew that there was over-utilization, or, you know, hate to say waste, but honestly it was. But picking that out of the rest of the nine-one-one system was incredibly difficult and dangerous, right? This is something that we can't mess up, right? I mean, essentially, we're talking about typically, we were receiving a nine-one-one call, and we were sending off all of these resources, and we needed to become more efficient. But what that really means is, we had to decide, what were we not going to send a resource to? And when you reframe the project in the mind of receiving a nine-one-one call and choosing what not to send, it becomes very scary. And as a physician who's responsible for the medical care of a community, that's a terrifying project. But as you saw in the graphs, right up till 2015, the medical call volume was just punishing to the fire department. And two thousand and fifteen is when I joined this community, and I can tell you, it's not exactly a feel-good moment when you join up and find that the thing that's hurting your public safety is all in the medical arena, so that was not great. But we did, we buckled down, we had all the right people at the table, chief was spectacular, dispatch was incredible. And it's sort of, I don't want to say a behind-the-scenes partner, because they were certainly at the table, but we've got incredible data analytics out of our EMS partners, talking about who was getting transported and what the severity of the patients were. So pages and pages and pages, thousands of lines of spreadsheet data that was processed from all of this, allowed us to do just that and find the ones that truly were being wasted and could be reinvested in a more efficient manner. So incredible success story. The problem, of course, is that only identifies one category of utilization, that if we can, based on the call information, sort these into those low-acuity call types, we can say that it's not as serious, and that we can adjust the resources to be sent. The problem is, there are still many, many calls, the preponderance of calls, actually, that get classified into more emergent classifications, and therefore aren't going to qualify for this type of reduced response. Now, when we unpack that problem, we start seeing that a lot of those fall into things that have been real struggles for communities, like behavioral emergencies, psychiatric emergencies, drug abuse issues, because when you process one of those calls, they don't come out as a low-acuity call. They may come out as difficulty breathing, or they may come out as altered mental status. And those things are never going to get classified as a low-acuity call, right? So as awesome as this project that we did at the community is, it doesn't address the whole field that we need to get into. So to next steps, we needed to figure out, how could we start working on those issues that we haven't yet figured out? Yes, we want to celebrate what we've done, but we also need to move forward, because the job's not done. So we went out to our national partners, looking for communities that were similar to ours, that had had some success in these other more challenging areas. And fortunately, we were able to find some good analogues, and it didn't hurt that we've got friends in these systems, and we're able to have some real candid conversations about what works and what doesn't. But we found some programs in Colorado Springs and Tulsa, which have similar population sizes and square miles, so we felt that they would be at least potentially representative of what might work in our community. And what we found is that they were using essentially the same system, which was a sort of straightforward, but in a kind of beautiful way, revolutionary, of deploying a multidisciplinary team, specifically a three-member team that was centered around mental health, law enforcement, and then a clinician. Because what they had identified was that this other more difficult population could almost always be met by this three-pronged team, and that those three domains were oftentimes able to work synergistically together to approach those more challenging issues. So the, the purpose of having a mental health worker on this, on the group, was to do psychiatric and behavioral emergency-type screenings. This is something that they were good at, it's in their wheelhouse, and they could determine when something was happening because of a mental health issue. They identified early on that having law enforcement present not only added a degree of safety for the team, but that these were the people who were skilled and experts in the arts of de-escalation, as well as carrying some of the legal authorities when those types of instruments were necessary. And then, of course, the third member being a more traditional clinician, in their case the form of a paramedic firefighter, to do the medical screening exams and sorting out that this was truly from a behavioral emergency or from a drug abuse issue, and was not from some other medical clinical issue that would need to be addressed at a hospital. So bringing those three together, they suddenly had all of the tools in a single team to address whatever it was that the community member needed. So this slide is just a text list of what the purpose of each of the members are. I included that so that you would have it in your notes. So determining which calls to go on is one of the challenges. So just like we were talking about before, I can't necessarily sort these calls through the EMD process and dispatch. But by having people who are expert in this field, they were able to simply monitor the radio traffic and self-identify calls that were within their area of expertise. So the law enforcement team member was monitoring the law enforcement radio traffic, and the medical personnel was monitoring the EMS traffic. And they developed the skill set of being able to identify those and essentially grab the call from the queue, free up the units that would have traditionally been sent on that, and handle it themselves, allowing those other units, just like we talked about with the fire apparatus, to stay available for other types of calls or community needs. It's a pretty slick design. They built out and fleshed out some examples of things that would be good things to go to and bad things to go to, divided out into law enforcement calls and medical calls. And one of the, the things that they really focused on was the team approach, that this was supposed to be a consensus-based decision, that the team would analyze a potential call, determine that it was appropriate for them, and then initiate freeing up those other units. There's a degree of complexity to this. So this was one of their algorithms for dealing with a behavioral health emergency. And I, I don't include this to say that this is exactly what we would do, but it speaks to the complexities of the decision-making that's required on scene, and it also starts to unpack some of the relationships that are necessary within the community between the public safety system, the healthcare system, and the behavioral health system, where all of this overlaps. So we would need to build something similar to this that would capitalize on the resources available in our community. From a medical screening protocol, this was something that was identified that was potentially high-risk. When you're doing medical screenings, it's important not to miss. So they had identified a list of medical parameters that they felt would get them the information that they need, and it has turned out to be very successful. They also identified some things that were not good targets for this program, that probably should be addressed through other methods. But the outcomes are where it really gets exciting in this program, and I am optimistic that we could achieve this in our community if we get the appropriate collaboration. So these are the numbers out of the Colorado Springs system, and while it says year-to-date, it's actually the December report, so it's a full year's worth of information out of 2018. Their team, operating seven days a week, eight hours a day, with double coverage across the weekends, they were able to respond to over three thousand calls. Sixteen hundred of them were able to be treated where they were, and a relatively small number needed to go on their involuntary holds. And I really liked this, because I had some hesitation early on, that if we're sending this out, is it just to grab these people and put them on holds and, and send them off to wherever we're sending them off? I didn't, I didn't want that. And so seeing that these guys were able to manage these cases without the force of law was really exciting to me. So the vast preponderance of this, we're simply being treated with basic interventions, transports to alternative destinations, or maybe even just access to resources, all the while keeping those other public safety responders available. Disposition is exciting, specifically the largest wedge there of treat and place. These are the people that they were able to go to, identify their problem, and mitigate the issue right there where the person was. No need for transportations, no need for burdening other resources within the community. They're not filling up ERs, or going to the jail, or clogging up the mental health system. These people had their issues handled right where they were. The second smaller wedge there is behavioral health, that CSU would be analogous to what our community calls com care. And then some did still need to go to the hospital. Memorial and Penrose are both hospitals in Colorado Springs. So it's not that this eliminates the need for transport to traditional resources, but it makes us, for the first time, thinking about what's the right place to send them, instead of what's the place we're used to sending them. Colorado Springs was, because they're running basically ten days a week, they've got a full seven days with a three-day overlap, they were able to capitalize on an incredible amount of freed-up units. So while we see hundreds of paramedic units through the fire department and fire apparatuses being freed up, the dramatic impact is on law enforcement. So in a community that struggles to have appropriate staffing for law enforcement, this is an opportunity for us to free up those resources and have them available where a law enforcement unit really is necessary. Tulsa's running a smaller pilot project with the same design. They're operating two days a week on ten-hour shifts, so twenty hours in a week are being delivered, and they still have been able to free up over seven hundred units. If they had been doing this full-time, their projections are that they would reach nearly three thousand freed-up units with this program design. So what we asked the work group was this question. First, is this something that we think we can implement, and is this something that we should implement? And fortunately, that was an immediate and unanimous answer of, this absolutely sounds exciting. And so now we're digging into this how. What would this look like in our community? Is it something that we can simply take and transplant using the exact same design? Or are there unique circumstances within our system that would require us to make adjustments to it? That's the work that's moving forward. We don't have an exact answer on this yet, and we haven't committed to any particular design, but there's enough excitement behind this that we think it's time for you guys to be aware of it, to be able to weigh in on it and ask questions. But our intent is to move forward with a design like this, with hopefully dramatic impact on the community. So, thank you for having me. Hopefully, this is useful to you, and we'll take any questions.
Questions?
Yes.
Chief Snow, I think, I think you probably said this, and I just missed it. So who is responding to the P5s now?
The P5s is EMS.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're a transport unit, so they respond to, and if they need, they get on scene and they need help, then they'll call for us.
Okay. So I guess my question related to that is, the effect that that's had on EMS, Dr. Gallagher, Gallagher, is that, so has that brought about the need for more resources for EMS?
So it has not. So unfortunately, you have to recall that the original system was every, every one to everything, right? So those call volumes, the P5s, already existed within the EMS call queue, because we were sending everyone.
Oh.
So pulling the fire units from that didn't change what EMS was doing, but it freed up the fire units. Now, what we haven't gotten to yet, but is part of the ongoing EMD work group, is in the P6 category, that's the one where we will be, hopefully in the future, be able to free up the EMS unit, because just like in the P5s, where we identified it's appropriate for fire department to not be there, in the P6s, we're looking to identify the areas where the ambulance doesn't need to be there. So I'm hoping to have a similar effect in benefiting their call volume, not through the P5s, but through the P6. The difference between the two is that they're, they're in those categories that have been identified as needing only a single-unit response, not a double-unit response. But picking those out is just unbelievably challenging.
So I should have started this off with, this is awesome. It is. And then I have one other question, and this is just as thinking, going forward on the CRT model. I can see the integration of our HOT team with this, and how, so I suspect that you're thinking about those things as we move forward.
Yeah, I think that the work that's been done there has created, you know, responders that have an incredible skill set. So I think collaboration with the police department is going to be key on this.
Thank you.
So I, I too think this is outstanding, and certainly allows us to analyze how we need to respond and what equipment we need to respond with. Taking that a step further, how many of those other calls are fire calls? And then are we analyzing that to make sure we have the right resources and fire equipment?
Yeah, and that's what I'm continuing to do, as we continue to gather data, is, you know, if you, if you remember back to the graph, we're staying pretty consistent with fire, what we call non-medical calls, so we'll continue to sort those out and make determinants on making sure that we've got the right resources or the appropriate, most cost-effective resources going to those fire calls.
Yeah, because when we talk about past, where everyone responded to every call, in some cases, we were sending big trucks, which puts mileage on vehicles that we don't want to put mileage on.
Yeah, that's, that was one of our, the driving forces beyond the decision on trying this pilot program with pickup trucks. And if we can, you know, depending on the data that comes out, we'll make some informed decisions, but yeah, we want to make sure that we're matching the resources with the severity of, of the call.
Good stuff. All right, thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Robert.
Mayor, the next item is a report back to the council on the results that came from domestic violence program audit. And we have three departments that are going to respond in terms of actions that we've taken as a result of the report and its recommendations. Police Department, and the Law Department, and Municipal Court, all have had a role in discussing implementation of the recommendations. And so I believe Jennifer's going to start off, and we'll go from there.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of City Council. As the manager said, police department, court, and legal staff are here to talk about the city's participation in the recent domestic violence and sexual violence audit that was conducted. This actual process occurred in 2018, but before we get there, we thought we'd go back and give you some background and a little bit about how we got to where we are. About six years ago, the city was one of the participants in the Coordinated Community Response Team, called CCR. And that CCR was formed as a formal, formal, comprehensive, collaborative, victor, victim and survivor-centered response team. The team is formed of agencies from the city, the county, our local nonprofit advocacy groups, and hospitals. So from the city, it was city police department, law, from the sheriff, from the county, it was the sheriff's department and emergency communications, and then some other community partners. It meets monthly to address agency concerns, share information, and address specific issues of concern. Along about 2016, the city was looking to see how we could be a participant or get some outside or external review of our own domestic violence response, and how we could have, have somebody take a look at that. At that time, the governor's, Kansas Governor's Grants Program was looking for someone to partner with to utilize funds from the Department of Justice Violence Against Women's Act Office, and it came together that we were available, we were willing, and the strong foundation of the community, coordinated community response team, was recognized in terms of being a good partner. So that grant was awarded for the community response team. To get there, we had twelve agencies commit to forming a formal partnership through an MOU to complete and process the assessment team. And the process began. So the participating agencies, twelve agencies, and I think it's notable, twelve agencies committed their time, their staff, and their efforts for at least a year to, to see this process through. And these are some of the agencies here. I won't read them for you. Then the next page includes the other agencies. Wichita Police Department was represented by Lieutenant Jason Stevens, who heads up the domestic and sexual violence unit, is also here today and will speak. I think other department, Wichita Police Department members attended regularly. I think other department, Wichita Police Department members attended regularly. There was a large commitment of, of resources and staff to this process. City Wichita was represented, the Law Department was represented by Assistant City Attorney Jan German, who is also here today and will speak about the Legal Department's response. StepStone, Wichita Area Sexual Assault Center, Wichita Family Crisis Center, and the team itself was a member of the MOU. So that process began, the MOU was signed, all the agencies were committed to participating, and then, then that began. I will pass it now to Lieutenant Stevens from the Police Department here, who will talk about the process itself and the Wichita Police Department's findings and those responses. And then the other departments will be represented by Nathan Emery and Jan German.
Good morning, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Like she said, my name is Lieutenant Jason Stevens from the Wichita Police Department. And I do want to speak a little bit towards our purpose for conducting this assessment. And I'll talk a little bit about the process that went in behind that. I want to start by saying it was designed to recognize, categorize, and analyze institutional responses to domestic or DV and sexual violence. It's not intended to look at individual cases. It wasn't intended to point the finger at any individual within any organizations. It was really to look at the broad spectrum of the processes that are involved in investigating these cases and the handling of victims throughout the entire process, you know, crossing multiple different disciplines and agencies. So in that, we had the intent of focusing on specific problems. And through that, we looked at several institutional policies and practices in order to enhance safety of victims in our community. We focused on revealing how laws, policies, the forms that we use, our standard operating procedures, and other influences that we use internally, and how those create specific obstacles or gaps, as we called them. To do this, we went through an organization called Praxis International, which is based out of Minnesota. And they have a, they're a nonprofit organization that basically has developed a standardized process for evaluating the safety, these kind of safety assessments in communities throughout the country. Several of our members went to formal training through this organization and brought that training back to our CCR, and we formed a audit team, as we called it. I also want to say that this wasn't a quantitative system review, it was more a qualitative system review of what we can do to better ourselves rather than looking at numbers specifically. Towards the beginning of the, I'm sorry, I'm not a prolific PowerPoint user. One of the beginning steps of the process was to identify our assessment question, the focus of what we were wanting to achieve. And that was, how does the Wichita Cedric County Community and Criminal Justice System respond to risk and safety for victims of domestic violence and sexual violence within one week of disclosure in Wichita? And I want to go back one step and say that I'm pretty confident in saying this, our audit coordinator checked into this. I do believe that Wichita, in our CCR, was the first to tackle both of these ideologies together at once. All of the preceding assessments dealt with one or the other, either domestic violence or sexual violence, not both together. Here in Wichita, we decided that both are equally important and both deserve the same type of attention. And quite frankly, a lot of them have the same kind of crossover between victims and investigations anyway, so it made perfect sense for us to look at it in that way. The process started with several focus groups. We interviewed a lot of victims and survivors who had previous contact with the community organizations, being criminal justice, or the advocacy, or the medical pieces of, of our community. We also formed focus groups and interviewed victims and survivors who had no previous contact with any of those entities. And after that, we got together and we began to map all of our individual institutional responses, primarily the medical response, the victim advocacy response, the criminal justice response, and the court response. We put together very detailed, basically blueprints of how a victim begins their journey and ultimately ends, at least up to that seven-day point in the process. And through that, identified a lot of the, the problems or gaps or concerns with victim safety that arise while going through this process. There was also a lot of observation assignments where members of our committee went to 911 Dispatch and actually observed dispatchers. They observed Wichita police officers on ride-along assignments. And they went on, went with the Sheriff's Department on PFA services and observed their processes as well. We also went into courtrooms. We went into PFA and stalking order hearings, and they sat in our own courtroom here in the Wichita Municipal Court. It also entailed a lot of text analysis, a lot of policies and procedures were examined, a lot of pamphlets that all of our organizations utilize. We even opened ourselves to allowing the team to examine almost, I believe, 100 Wichita Police Department incident reports on both domestic and sexual violence. And from all of this, we began to formulate suggestions on how to improve our practices and processes, and through that, we came up with the gaps. Now, there were gaps that existed for each one of us. Like I said before, this wasn't designed to be a finger-pointing endeavor. It wasn't, you know, it didn't have anything to do with that. It had everything to do with members of all of the different disciplines and organizations within our community working together to try to look and, and take an honest look at ourselves and each other and find ways to improve our services to the victims of domestic and sexual violence here in Wichita. The Wichita Police Department did have five gaps. I believe there were upwards around 13 or 16, if I recall correctly. But five were distinct to the Wichita Police Department, so I'm going to speak to those to you here today. I'm going to lump gaps number one and two together because they're very similar. Gap number one addresses the understaffing that exists in the Wichita Police Department Patrol Division. And gap number two, in the Investigations Division, specifically the domestic and sexual violence section that I command. Essentially, the team realized that in order to more safely and efficiently serve our community, the numbers that we're dealing with suggest that we needed more personnel in these areas. So the Wichita Police Department, taking into consideration a staffing study that was done within our department with, during 2016, I believe, received approval for Phase One of that staffing study, which included the addition of 13 officers for the Patrol Division and three additional detectives for the Domestic Violence Sex Crimes Unit. And I can say staff has been hired and the positions are going to be filled in the upcoming months. Specific to my section, I just learned yesterday that I'm going to be filling two new seats in my section in the Domestic Violence Sex Crimes Unit starting next Monday. So we're, we're working diligently towards getting that, that gap fulfilled. And we've made requests to have two additional sergeant positions added to the unit to assist in supervising the complex investigations on, on each side of those two sides of the Gap number three addresses, or basically states that responding officers do not consistently have access to all criminal protective and civil protective order information. This is kind of a complex situation, so I'm going to have to give you a little bit of background on what we mean by this. Whenever an officer in the field responds to a domestic violence call, there is, in the process, and there always has been, the need to make sure or ensure that there aren't any existing protection orders that exist with the offender on the, on the case. And this has historically been done by the officer getting on the radio and calling Spider, which is our Special Police Information Data Entry and Retrieval Unit. They're a branch of our records division, and they basically monitor a radio channel for officers to use to, they do a lot of different things, checking for warrants, but one of their functions is, is responding to requests for protection order information. The problem that we've, we recognized was they're very good and efficient at locating what we call protection from abuse orders and protection from stalking orders. And on occasion, even protection orders connected to a criminal case in municipal court called no-contact orders. What I mean by that is, is when an offender is bonded out from jail on a misdemeanor domestic violence charge, they're given a 72-hour no-contact order. Those things have been readily accessible to Spider by either looking in our current record management system or calling directly to sheriff records to find out the existence of these orders. The problem that we realized was there's a lot of other different scenarios that exist out there. For example, there are felony cases where a arrestee has been arrested on a felony domestic violence or even sexual violence call, and as part of their bond restrictions, they are forbidden from having any kind of contact with the victim. There isn't any kind of database out there that we had access to that lets us know that. That's problematic, because there's a lot of those cases out there that, had we known, we could have made, made an arrest when officers responded to a call of service. There are also situations where we've learned that in family court and district court, the family court judges very often will consolidate a protection from abuse order into a divorce decree. Essentially, what that does is it hides that protection order from law enforcement. Spider was no longer able to call over to sheriff records and so readily find out that these protection orders, that there's a protection order because it had been consolidated into a civil divorce decree. Those are the two really big problems that we recognize. So our solution has been quite simple, actually, because we know that we can't realistically consolidate all of our records management systems within the county. There is a program that, that already exists called Full Court that's used by the district court that actually has a database with all of these answers that we need. Another problem, before I go into that, was oftentimes the officer in, in the field in real time might know that there's a protection order, a stalking order, or a protection from abuse order, but the order itself varies from order to order on what the restrictions are. We didn't have access to that information. So if the victim, hopefully if they had a copy of that order, we could read that order at the scene and we could make a determination, but that's not always the case. So with Full Court, what we've decided, Full Court basically has all of this information. It has the ability to find out if there's a criminal case pending and to find out what the restrictions in that criminal case are. It provides the ability for the user to look into any protection order and actually read it on a, on a PDF and, and find out what it entails. So we have already implemented the first phase of our response to this, which is get granting all records personnel on the Wichita Police Department, at least read-only access to Full Court so they can access these orders. Phase two, which is in progress right now, is having someone from the county train them on, on the usage of that program so they can effectively and efficiently get the information needed by the officers. And once that's in place, there's going to need to be a minor policy change within the Wichita Police Department. We are still going to recommend that officers contact Spider to find the protection from abuse, protection from stalking, and the misdemeanor no-contact orders in the same manner as they always did before. But now we're going to require those officers to ask a few follow-up questions of the victim, such as, is there a pending felony case, which would prompt that officer to contact records and find out that important information? And is there a no-contact order potentially that is in a divorce decree, which again would prompt them to call records and get that information? And in those situations where the officers do not have access to the information they need in real time, they can call records and have someone look that information up, and we can determine what the, the specific restrictions in that order are. Gap number four basically states that all law enforcement officers do not receive trauma-informed DV and sexual violence response training. I'll go into a little bit about what trauma-informed is. Basically, it's a thought process that takes into account the physical, mental, behavioral, and social impact of violent crime on victims. It goes into the neurobiology that is behind the trauma that a victim of domestic violence or sexual violence goes through. Historically, law enforcement, not just the Wichita Police Department, but law enforcement as a whole, has viewed domestic violence and sexual violence oftentimes differently than they should, I'll say. This type of philosophy or mentality will, in training, will allow officers to actually see what the effects of trauma are, and they can take into account the kinds of past trauma and the resulting coping mechanisms that victims of these crimes go through so they can understand what they're seeing and, and basically react appropriately to that and incorporate those ideas into their investigation. Quite frankly, it will hopefully eliminate a lot of victim blaming type of attitudes and behavior in these cases. And again, give us the opportunity and ability to see what victims are going through, through a different lens so that we can appropriately allocate resources to help them get through the criminal justice system. Another phrase, or another type of terminology would be a victim-centered approach to this. And of course, that type of approach incorporated with trauma-informed seeks to minimize any... And of course, that type of approach incorporated with trauma-informed seeks to minimize any revictimization that's associated by the victim through the incident, and it focuses on integrating a variety of services and support mechanisms for that victim. Now, how will this benefit officers, investigations, victims? I touched on a few things. It's more likely that officers will be able to now start to begin to ask more appropriate questions while they're obtaining facts and information and allowing them to be a little more objective rather than subjective in these cases. It would be less likely for them to jeopardize any investigation by asking inappropriate victim-type blaming questions or using victim-type blaming language in their reports, or even subjecting subconscious attitudes into their reports or investigations that may be of little or no benefit to the investigation. And, as important, and which will tie into the next gap, it'll make them more likely to recommend and utilize victim's services, victim advocate services, and increase the likelihood that our victims stay engaged in the criminal justice system. So, last gap, gap number five, investigators do not consistently work to connect victims with community-based advocacy support during domestic and sexual violence investigations. Again, going back to where I left off on the last gap, this is very key in keeping our victims engaged in the criminal justice system. There are a lot of statistics, I've seen it firsthand myself, that in a lot of these cases, that is a major struggle, is keeping the victim engaged in the system for a variety of different reasons. So, to address this, the Wichita Police Department has currently been working with the Department of Law to update the victim information sheet that we already use to ensure that officers in the field have the most up-to-date information for victim resources to provide to our victims. We eliminated a lot of unnecessary language and added a lot more contact information and useful victim advocate resources for our victims. We've also implemented a tri-fold pocket version that officers will be able to carry very easily and readily in the field to give to our victims, as well as the detectives in the Domestic Violence Sex Crimes Unit to have on hand more easily. I also want to say that around the same time we began this process, Captain Brian White from the Wichita Police Department began a lethality assessment protocol, which is another step taken by agencies throughout the country to try to minimize domestic. He developed a questionnaire which has, I believe, 13 or 16 different questions in two different phases. In phase one, there's three questions, and any one positive response to that triggers a phone call to a victim advocate right then and there on the spot, or at least offering a phone conversation with a victim advocate, so that the victim can safety plan, that they can potentially take advantage of shelter and other resources that the Wichita Police Department does not have or offer. The second half of it, if they respond positively to, I believe, six of those, it triggers the same type of phone call to an advocate. What we've realized is that we did not have the resources to do a follow-up contact with the victim, which is recommended in these lethality assessment protocols within a few days. So, the Investigations Division, through our system-based advocates that are attached to the Persons Crimes Bureau on the Wichita Police Department, are contacting all of the high-risk victims by phone within, hopefully, 72 hours, that's our goal, and following up with them and coordinating with them and trying to make sure that they're following through on those victim resources that were offered at the time of the call. And, lastly, detectives in the Domestic Violence Sex Crimes Section are making themselves more available, and the goal is to continue to make them more available to victims throughout the investigative process by recommending, or at least asking them if they would like victim assistance from either the system-based or the community-based advocates. That may even include, on occasion, asking them if they want to have an advocate sit in with them during the investigative interview. And then our system-based advocates, and there's community-based advocates, that also provide advocacy during the court proceedings, where they may even go and sit with them during the trial and other aspects of the criminal justice process. And that pretty much concludes the Wichita Police Department's gaps. I believe there will be a question and answer after I'm finished. So, next up, I am going to turn it over to the Law Department, or the Court.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The audit identified one gap with the performance of the court. That gap was victim risk and safety is compromised by the setting and conditions of domestic violence in the court. The basis for that conclusion was contained in four observations, and I'll address each observation. The first two observations were primarily about the people mixing in the court and the court hallways. And in looking at that, we had to look at what fundamentally a court in America is. Fundamentally, we have open courts, and having an open court means that the court is conducted in a manner and space where all members of the community may come and view the city of Wichita's application of justice. And the result is a diverse group of individuals entering and occupying its public space. Understanding that the public is always welcome to court proceedings, the court is sensitive to the unique needs of victims and seeks to be a safe and comfortable place for case resolution. As such, the court repurposed office space on the third floor of City Hall adjacent to the courtrooms to be an area that is exclusively for the use of victims. This space provided by the court will be maintained and operated by the victim advocate office. This room will provide victims a safe and comfortable place to wait while proceedings conclude. Additionally, it will provide a place for the victim if the victim and the defendant need to be separated, and will be an area where the victim advocate can provide services. There we go. The third observation was that victims can sometimes be removed from the court due to disruptive communication between parties. And I think it's important to say that the court seeks to be fair and impartial while maintaining the quorum of the court itself. Often, there's an order prohibiting communications between the victim and the defendant, and the nature and structure of the court places defendants and victims in close proximity, which can lead to prohibited communications. One of the parties may be asked to leave the courtroom to maintain order in the court and to protect all parties from violating the court's orders, and likely, this will be the victim, not because the court has anything against the victim, but that in order to provide efficient, safe, and effective resolution to the victim's grievance, the defendant is the necessary party. While the victim certainly won't like to be asked to depart the courtroom, we still seek to treat them with dignity and provide them a safe, comfortable space to participate or view the court. So, we will be leveraging that victim room in those circumstances as well, and repurposing closed-circuit television technology that we've been using for our jail court to ensure that the victims remain connected to the court proceedings and don't simply feel shunted off to a holding room. I think that's a very important part of that room and will help people to feel involved. The fourth observation was that the court appeared disorderly when the judge wasn't on the bench. And the court is certainly committed to providing a safe and ordered environment for the disposition of all cases. Unruly and disruptive behavior isn't acceptable whether the court is in session or is out. As such, training has been provided to the bailiff and service officers to ensure that the gallery remains quiet and no illegal contact occurs when court is out of session. Ensuring a safe and orderly courtroom protects all parties to the case and helps the court to effect appropriate dispositions. Next will be Jan from City Legal to discuss the gaps identified in the audit for the prosecutors.
Good morning. This project was interesting and important to me. When I started with the city in 1997, I prosecuted on domestic violence for 10, my first 10 years here. So, it's always been an interest of mine. And this project was exciting because Wichita, ever since I arrived in 97, we have been the frontrunners in domestic violence prosecution and in the way the city responds to domestic violence. And I've always been really proud of how Wichita has responded, and we've always had a city council who has supported our efforts in that. So, I wasn't surprised by some of these gaps, but I was really excited to see how quickly we responded to these gaps. The gaps for the city prosecutor's office really are based around communication issues, which is surprising since we're a bunch of attorneys. I guess we still have problems communicating sometimes. And it was based that we weren't always informing the victim of when we refused or when we declined to prosecute a case. I think that we probably didn't realize it was so significant, because honestly, we prosecute most of the cases. We have police laid charges in this area, so an officer brings us a case that's already charged, and we rarely decline them. But there are some. We review the cases every single day that officers make arrests on, and there are times that we disagree with the officer's decision, so there are times that we refuse or we can't prosecute a case successfully. There are also times that, excuse me, cases are brought to us by detectives, where maybe we hoped that they would be prosecuted by the District Attorney's Office, or maybe there wasn't sufficient amount to arrest, and then they'll bring that case to the prosecutor, and the prosecutor will say yes or no. And if we feel that we're unable to prosecute, I have to admit, in the past, there has never been a policy that we had to contact the victim and tell the victim, here's what happened to your case. It always, it's not that it didn't happen, but it varied based on who the prosecutor was, because there simply wasn't a policy. And that was the gap that was kind of identified in this. So now, thanks to this study we've done, we've developed a letter that every victim who is declined, when the case has declined prosecution in the city, every victim will get a letter. Oh, thanks. Okay. Every victim will receive a letter from our advocate telling them that the case was not prosecuted. It also tells them who they can contact if they have questions about it, and it'll tell the victim where they can go for services as well. We have a victim advocate in our office who can help them receive services. We also now send out a second letter. When the judge issues a longer-term no contact order in court, the victim will be sent a letter telling them that there is a no contact order. The victim isn't in trouble, and the no contact order isn't against the victim, it's against the offender, but it's nice that the victim knows that there's a longer-term no contact order. And she can also, or he or she, can give that to the officer if there is a case occurring where there is contact, and if the victim calls the police, now there's a letter that the victim could give the officer to show that there is a no contact order. So, we have developed two letters that we are now giving in these cases. We have, there were some other issues, they weren't necessarily gaps, but definitely some issues that related to communication that this study brought about, and so we have responded to those as well, the best we could. We have created a victim brochure, which will give information on the court system, the court process, and what it's going to look like when you get to court, to give more information to victims. The most exciting thing, I think, is that we are communicating better than ever with the District Attorney's Office. It is a new day, and we now have regular meetings with the District Attorney's Office where we talk about cases that concern us. It is not uncommon at all in the city prosecutor's office to see cases that we think are very serious, and we can't believe that they're not felonies. And now, we can talk as a group about, why isn't this a felony? What do we need in this case to, what kind of evidence do we need to get this to a felony? And so now, we're having meetings with the District Attorney's Office, and there's an even larger meeting with the police detectives in the case, so we can all work together to identify the offenders who are the highest risk to victims, to figure out, what are we missing? What kind of evidence do we need to help this victim more? And that's, after doing this for years and years, that's probably one of the most exciting things that I've seen come from this. We're also using the data that the police department is gathering, the police department's really into data right now, and we're using the data that they're gathering to help us target repeat offenders. So, that's been a good thing to see as well. We've also, gap, it's unfortunate, but the gaps always seem to be money, sometimes seem to be money-related. You know, we need more officers, we need more prosecutors, and the police department has responded, and we did as well. We have found a way to take the staff that we already have and stretch it a little bit farther, and we have added an additional prosecutor to the domestic violence docket on Mondays and Fridays, which is our heaviest days. I don't know why, but they seem to be our largest days, so we rearranged the office so we could figure out and try to get more help in that area. So, those are the gaps that have been related to the prosecutor's office. That's how we have attempted to resolve some of these gaps, and at this point, I think the whole group stands for questions.
That's great information, great analysis, important topic. One of the concerns that I've had in the past, and I would like to know how you might have addressed it, it's been a few years, but had a victim of domestic violence literally walk me through the process of filing the paperwork, where she had to be accessed to potentially her perpetrator, and all of that from the very beginning. And the concern is, where they initially have to go to file the initial paperwork and how they could still have potential correspondence with the other party? And there was never a safe place for that to transpire. Have we altered, been able to talk to, because I think all of that's done at the county building? Have we been able to work with the county to alter that process in some way that would give those people at least a little more privacy or protection as they're processing the needed paperwork?
That is definitely, that's one of the gaps that we identified in this study. I was, in fact, on the team that went to watch the PFA side of court, and we are very concerned about the access issues. We're talking about, well, they are, they know it's a gap, and it's been identified as a gap, and something's going to have to happen on that end. Has anything happened yet? Not that I know of, nothing that I know of, but I agree, that is a huge gap.
So, we're addressing a lot of the other issues, and that's outstanding. I would love to hear some follow-up in the near future of how potentially we're working with our neighbors to address some of those.
Judge Fleetwood is involved. Judge Fleetwood is involved in that discussion, I know that, and I know that they are constrained by space, because a lot of that happens, first of all, in an office where everybody has access, and we even spoke with the people who work in that office who don't feel safe. So, it's not just the victims.
The other problem is, and again, it's a, it's a resource, people resource. They can go into some of those areas where they're supposed to file, and they have to hit a bell for service. I mean, there's no person there, potentially, and while they're filling out the paperwork, the person might actually even leave the room to go attend to other business, which leaves them really feeling vulnerable in a, in a place that they're not familiar with all alone.
I agree. Any comments on that?
Well, and again, the problem exists over there, too, where they're using what is used as a jury room every other day of the week. On Thursdays becomes their PFA, PFS courtroom, and that's, that's been identified as being extremely problematic. That gap, I'll just touch on it a little bit, too, addresses the number of security in the room and the monitoring and the courtroom decorum and, and a variety of other things that, like I said, Judge Fleetwood and his, his people over there are gonna, gonna have to address somehow. If you don't mind, I'm going to spend thirty seconds on this. I, I mentioned one of the gaps, and because I, I guess I'm nervous or something, I forgot to tell you what we're doing about it. The, the training on the Trauma-Informed Victim Center, and I think I did pretty good educating everybody what that is, but I should mention that we are actively working with our Training Bureau, with the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, and we're going to partner with WSU, and we're going to try to find some kind of formal training curriculum that we can use for new recruits coming into the department, and so that we can train everyone department-wide on this. As part of the, the grant that we received through the Governor's Grants Office to do this project, there is some money earmarked that has to be used by September of this year to bring in qualified speakers to talk to members of the department, and we're trying to work with training on that to see about getting them in and getting as many of our officers through that training as possible. I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Whenever we were talking about the protection orders, and you'd mentioned, you know, they could keep that letter, is that something that's readily available through Spider as well, if they tell an officer there's a protection order out there?
Yeah, Spider is able to tell the officers in the field that a protection from abuse or a protection from stalking order exists. They always have been able to do that. Spider does not have the capability, nor do they have the time to, to look at those orders in depth and read them and tell the officers what they entail, but they can tell them that they exist. And that's why we've, we've integrated additional record staff who, records is divided into a few different disciplines. There's Spider, there's Case Desk that entered, does data entry into the computer to enter cases into the records management system, and then there's records clerks. It's their job to answer the phone and to answer records-type questions for officers or walk-ins, civilians, and those records clerks are now going to have that capability of looking into full court and finding the, 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 the other cases that, that we didn't have the ability to find before through Spider. And Spider, and Spider, they have, they're multi-functional, so they have a lot of different things. They're monitoring radio channels. They actually work for the entire county, so law enforcement from the entire county utilizes Spider. So, like I said, Spider always has and will continue to be able to say that there is an order, but if we want to dig deeper into what that order entails, we're gonna, it's going to be a phone call to our records clerks. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's available twenty-four-seven?
Yes, they are a twenty-four-seven operation, all of our records bureau is, and Spider for that matter.
Thanks. Were there other questions down there? Yes, Brandon?
Thanks, Mayor. So, in regard to the court, and I know you kind of talked about removing victims, is there a way that maybe you could interchange that so they don't feel targeted, because if someone has survived something, and then because of some altercation verbally, they have to leave again? Maybe there's a way that they can also stay, and then the defendant leaves for a little while, and then they come back, or is that too difficult?
Well, I, I think the, the issue is, if, if the defendant leaves, we really can't do anything, because we're, we're there to, to handle the case against them. I, I can say that the, the removal of a victim is, is really last resort, and I'm, I'm pretty confident that there's been a lot of communication that's been attempted to be curtailed between the two parties before it reaches that point. And I can tell you, my staff really tries to be sensitive and, and respectful of, of all of the parties that are involved in that. But likely, it, it, you know, for the court to proceed, it would have to be the victim, and, and we really want to make them as comfortable and feel as, as respected as we possibly can, even under those adverse circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I say something else? Thank you. I think part of what we want to do is empower victims, so if a victim wants to be in the courtroom, they're going to be welcome to be in the courtroom. Right now, we have a number of victims who go down to the prosecutor's office and sit down there, and that really removes them from the process, and that means anytime an advocate or prosecutor wants to speak with them, we have to go from third floor to second floor, stop court, can't do anything else while we're gone. So, the exciting part is, it will give up a safe place for the victim who doesn't want to sit in the courtroom. There's really very few that are removed against their will from the courtroom, and it'll be great if that happens, but I think the prosecutor, the victim advocate, and the prosecutor, we see this as just a safe place where they can go and this, and watch it on, see it on CCTV and still be a part of it without being shunned down to the prosecutor's office. So, it really will have probably way more of a positive spin than a negative spin, but anytime someone wants to stay in the courtroom and they're behaving, they're welcome to be there.
Awesome. And, so I have one question for each of you, actually. So, on the notification letter that they will get now, is there, will it contain why you all decided not to prosecute, and is there an opportunity for them to possibly appeal that?
It doesn't say why. It's a form letter, and it just says that our standard is beyond a reasonable doubt and that we don't think that we have met, we don't, that we have enough evidence to meet that burden. It does say that additional evidence could be considered, and it does say that there, you know, additional evidence, could be witnesses, so there is a list of things that we would be looking for and to charge, you know, when we charge a case, but it also says you can contact us, and we'll talk with you about your case.
Okay. Perfect. And then...
I'll add a little bit on that, too, real quick. From my personal experience, I've found in some cases that when you make that follow-up contact with a victim, you sometimes learn things about the case you didn't know already, and that letter gives them that additional opportunity to present that, that additional evidence that may exist that they may not have mentioned to the, the reporting officer or even the detective at some point.
Perfect.
So...
Just adding to that, because the case hasn't been disposed by the court, you know, it's, it, well, it's being, not being pursued by the prosecutor, it doesn't mean that as long as within, it's within the statute of limitations, it can't be picked back up. So, it's not a, a final determination in that sense.
Awesome. My last question is for WPD in regard to the sexual violence piece, and this wasn't talked about, but I know last year there was a conversation about rape kits getting submitted. Are we doing better with that, or?
We're doing much better. The KBI, just in brief, we call it the Saki Project, the Sexual Assault Kit Initiative. The KBI implemented this, the Wichita Police Department, very voluntarily, committed ourselves to participating in it. I know this very intimately. I've been the Wichita Police Department contact on this project. Since that time, we've tested all of our backlog that existed through the KBI, through that Saki Project, and there was a bright line in 2015. Everything before that was part of the Saki Project. We accumulated some, waiting for the KBI to come out with best recommendations. They have done that now. Their best recommendations for best practices were to test all of them. Our chief committed himself to that idea, and we've made it happen. As of February this year, we had zero kits in our backlog. Everything had been delivered to a lab. In order to make that happen, due to financial and other reasons, we've, we're taking them to two different locations. We're testing some at the Regional Forensic Science Center here in Sedgwick County, and we've, through cooperation with the KBI, we're testing the rest through the KBI. So, on a quarterly basis, we're going to be making deliveries to KBI, and we're going to be delivering them to the Forensic Science Center as, as usual. So, we're, we're caught up, and we're moving forward on that.
Awesome. That is, that's great news. Well, I should have said this first, like Councilmember Claycombe said, this was awesome. I appreciate the proactive work that you all are doing, and, and this was great, so thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? So, we still have an executive session. Our attorney, Jennifer McGonagall, gave me some information that just simply shares we need an executive session. She did not share the rest of that, so I'm just going to say we need an executive session for non-elected personnel, and is to confer with our attorney on this matter, and it's for fifteen minutes for pending litigation and legal advice, and this is to protect the attorney-client privilege, and we will hold the executive session in this room in just a couple of minutes and come back to, return to open meeting at eleven-twenty-five. Motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, let's clear the room, and we can begin our executive session.